I show at 6:30, so let's get this meeting going. So let's have a roll call. Julie?
Julie Byers here.
Carol?
Carol Hofstetter here.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin here.
Mike?
Mike Verasco here.
And Lance McNally is here. And well, you look good, Lori. And we don't have our associate member Ian, unless I don't see him. All right, so chairman's additions and deletions. So the one addition that I had is I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Mike Crowley, who is Crowley, who is our land use coordinator.
Yay.
Welcome on board, Mike, and we really look forward to working with you.
Absolutely. I'm really glad. I'm glad I got to join you all today. And hopefully I get to meet some of you in the office at some point. And in the meantime, I look forward to meeting you on Zoom in the Zoom world.
Okay, and you're going to meet all of us in the near, you know, in the future, so.
Absolutely.
Welcome on board, and we're really thankful that we have you. All right, so let me just jump to 1.3 approval of the minutes on December 20th, 2021. So first of all, is there any discussion on the minutes from our December 20th meeting? Do you have anything, Julie?
Nope, I don't.
Lori, do you have anything?
I do not.
Carol?
No, I don't have anything.
Mike?
Nope, no questions.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December the 20th, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Carol. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm all in favor. Julie?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
Okay, and I'm going to just abstain because I was not at the meeting. All right, let me jump on to 2.1. All right, final master plan 2021. So Beth has request, and Beth, correct me if I misspeak, but you've requested the final copy from Kim Craven with the assertions. Kim's replied back as far as saying that she's having problems incorporating the high resolution graphics. And so my plan of action is if we don't get something from Kim, I guess I'm going to contact her and say basically, send us the master plan. Send me the high resolution graphics. I have just unfortunately had my laptop die. So I now have a new laptop with all this memory with Windows 11, the latest Microsoft Word, so I'll just take care of it. Unless someone from the planning board has an objection with that because we need to get this done. Okay. All right, so let me jump down to 2.2. Review of the 14526 district bylaw draft amendment in terms of fowl. Gosh, I hope Hartley's still here. Hartley, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Could you let, Beth, can you go ahead and project the proposed bylaw?
Okay, you'll let me, yeah, with her co-host.
Yeah, let me see what we have.
All said, I hope.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ian has let me know he's having trouble getting in, so.
Do you know what his trouble is?
He said he was having trouble with the link. I directed him to the town website and the calendar, so hopefully he can get on.
He's on.
Oh, hey, Chaz.
Hello.
Can you guys see my screen? The bylaw on the screen?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Boom, okay. Yeah, I finally made. Yeah, it's the, the link wasn't pulling up for some reason, but I, I did, I went to the town page and did it through there.
Oh, you know, so Ian, what I do is I have installed the Zoom app on my laptop. And so I just put in the meeting number and then the passcode, and it seems to work every time.
Oh, okay. I usually just go straight to what Beth sends me. But I, I will do that because I, I don't think I have Zoom downloaded either. I'll do that. Well, thank you.
I think it's better to have the Zoom app as opposed to trying to come in through your browser.
It's much easier. That's how I do it, too. I had the same problem that Ian had a couple of times, and then I just started, I downloaded it. No more.
Well, that's a solution right there. Let me, let me do that now. All right, thank you.
Okay, so even though I, I'm sort of getting some flickering of red on my screen. All right, so I guess if the board can take the opportunity to sort of read what is highlighted in red in terms of the zoning bylaw. Can every, does everyone have, can everyone see it?
Yes.
So the only comment that as the chair that I have is I don't have a problem with it with the exception of excluding roosters. You know, I have no problem with the bylaw. It is the responsibility of the property owner to ensure their flock is sufficiently contained to the subject property. At no time shall the animals be permitted to enter abutting parcels or the public way. Failure to comply with this requirement will result in the removal of the animals. I don't believe that you can exclude roosters from that. Now, I believe the reason that the, the, the comment is in there in terms of excluding roosters is because, you know, there are complaints from here, you know, that, you know, neighbors don't like the crowing of roosters. Now, I have seen in another town bylaw where they basically said roosters must be contained in a soundproof, soundproof building from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Which, to be candid with you, we could add, but I don't believe that that would stand any legal challenge with anyone having roosters as a right to farm community. So I think the board's got two options. My recommendation probably would be to accept this modification with deleting excluding roosters. Comments? Carol?
So, um, if I'm the next door neighbor.
Yep.
And the rooster is crowing all day long.
Well, let's, let's make it worse, Carol. Let's say the rooster is crowing at 5:00 AM when you are still trying to get your beauty sleep. Which, by the way, you don't need, but anyway.
Well, actually, I am up at 5:00 AM and I have heard roosters crowing. But luckily, where I live, I have enough trees around me that it muffles the sound. So it doesn't really bother me because the sun, you know, through all the forests, the sun does get muffled. I only experience walking through the neighborhood. I live in Timberly Park. And where the houses are like on half acres, and I do, when I've gone by there, the roof, during the middle of the day, walking by the house where the houses are like very, very close together. The rooster was like screeching, and I'm just thinking, if I was that next door neighbor, that would drive me insane. But.
I agree with Carol because, you know, right to farm is the commercial activity of farming. They're not farming in Timberly Park. So I, I was hoping we could look at some type of restriction on the lot size to exclude roosters. In other words, you have to have a certain amount of acreage to have one. And then maybe it has to even be set back from property lines. I've seen that in other towns.
We do that for horses. We have to have a minimum of one acre lot to have a horse, which really still isn't enough.
Right.
There's also a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't ask for permission to speak.
Oh, no, you don't have to ask for permission.
I, the noise at 5:00 AM is prohibited. I mean, generally, that's, those are supposed to be quiet hours. 5:00 AM.
My, 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 my understanding is that as a right to farm community, you cannot restrict annoyances, noise, you know.
I get that.
That we cannot do that. That's my understanding. Now, I could be wrong. But that's my understanding.
Okay, but I agree with Julie. That's not commercial at Timberly Park.
Okay, so.
So it's not a right agriculturally do that in a residential.
Okay, so why don't, so here is my, my response then. Do you want me to, as a chair, basically send something to town council to basically say what restrictions can we put on the raising of roosters in Townsend? And get his guidance? I mean, and I'll, I'll say, you know, can it be based on acreage? Can it be based on time of day so that, you know, we can get something from town, town, town council? And move forward with that?
I would agree with that.
I agree.
I agree.
I would, to Lance, but I'm looking, I know it's like, thought we had, are, when we had visited this back in like November, that, I believe it was November. My notes are a little chaotic dating. But I believe we did talk about having someone reach out to town council back then. I don't think we've heard back yet.
Well, if we did, Mike, then I didn't do it.
Okay.
Where's Chaz?
We did.
Lori and Julie, that my understanding of right to farm, because I've seen this pop up in a couple, a couple other places, is only commercial use only. That's where it's the right to farm. Excluding roosters, you know, I would think, you know, I was always under the understanding back when I had chickens, and I have too many coyotes around me now, that there was, it was, you could only have so many per acre. So it looks like they're kind of getting away from that and rewriting it. Because I know pretty much how it was written, from my understanding back in the day, that Timberly Park pretty much, you couldn't have chickens there because it's, it was all, they're all half acre lots. Which I think is really the big reason for this verbiage change now is because of the current things. It's more of a Timberly Park thing. Because I don't really see any other areas with smaller lots than that, and maybe the center of Townsend. Everyone else.
Emery does, all the roads off of Emery.
I always consider Emery part of Timberly Park.
I do know that we, we had issues before on Highland.
Okay.
All right, Chaz, do you want to add anything to this?
Well, we did talk to the attorney in regards to the right to farm, and Julie is absolutely right. Right to farm is only in regards to the commercially zoned areas of town. I think the only comment that I remember him saying is that you can restrict and not exclude. So you might want to think of, think of that, but I agree. I would think that you guys come up with some kind of verbiage and then bring it to town council, and he can, he can craft it.
Okay. Mike, you have your hand up.
Me, Mike, or other Mike?
I'll take mine down. I already spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Crowley, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. We got a lot of mics now. We're stocking up on them. I just actually had a comment, reading through this sentence for the first time. The way the sentence structure is written out, it seems like the excluding roosters is statement is basically saying that you can have a flock of 20 birds, 20 fowl, but that doesn't count the roosters. The roosters are in addition to the 20. And just the way that the sentence structure is built out right now, it doesn't.
I agree with you.
So you can't, so I just, just as an observation, I don't know if that's what was intentional or what the goal was, but it, it sounds like this actually would extend the ability to have more birds and doesn't actually, any cap on roosters in any way.
You know, it basically reads right now that I could have 20 fowl, and they're females, and then I could have as many roosters as I wanted.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was just my observation. I wasn't sure if that was the intent, and so I just figured it out.
I don't think that was the intent, but I certainly agree with you.
Okay.
That's not a good thing.
It's my first, I don't know what you all want here, but I'm just giving you the outside observer perspective on this one, so.
No, that's a, that's a good observa- observation, Mike. All right, so I'll take the action item to draft something to town council. Basically, I think the important point is, you know, can it be limited for non-commercial purposes and for acreage limits? I mean, those are the two main points.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay. Um. Gosh, I don't think I need a motion or a vote on that because I'll just bring it to the next meeting. Because we're not making any decision. Does that sound good, Beth?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, so let me move on to 2.3 safe routes to school. Update, Carol? Carol?
I know, I'm talking and nobody's hearing me. I did contact Emily.
Well, we thought we were, you were boiling water.
Well, I will be boiling water for, in the morning when I go to wash my hair. And I sent her the list of activities and see if there's anything on that list that they, the recreation department might have already accomplished or could accomplish in the near future. I haven't heard back from her yet. And then I got Rachel from the Safe Roots to School is trying to contact the principals so she can do an assessment. And I think she said that it has to be approved, the, has to come from the principal for her to stop the assessment. So I'm not sure exactly where she is. I guess she does some observations of arrivals and dismissals at the school, but she does have to have the principals agree to that. So.
Do you need any help, Carol? Do you need us to draft anything to the principal saying that?
I know she said she CC'd Veronica and Chaz on that. So I'll follow up with her and see if she's having any luck with the principals.
Okay, do you have anything to add, Chaz?
Nope, nope. That's exactly. If he responds, then he usually responds to, to all of us. Carol, so just so you know, that's how they've done it in the past.
Okay.
But Carol, if for some reason you need us to draft anything to the principal, you know, stating that, you know, we really appreciate your support on this effort. You know, for us to move forward, we need this from you. Just let, let us know, okay?
Okay, I will.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the other board members have any comments for Carol? Other than thank you for working on this, Carol?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, 2.4 comments on the 2020 annual report. And I'll be candid, I have not had a chance to review it. What is it, what does it do, Beth?
I don't know that Beth and I were working on it.
Yeah.
Um, I guess that was decided at the last meeting. So we've got, we have some progress on it. And thanks to Chaz's report last year, which was very good. We're, we're expounding on that. So probably for the next meeting, right, Beth?
Yeah.
I sent her my edits, and now she's doing it, and we're going to go back and forth, and then we'll present.
Okay, so Beth, can I ask you to just like send an email out to the board with here's the copy that we'd like you all to review?
Sure.
And then that way, that will at least trigger me to review it. All right, any comments from any other board member on the annual report?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. I read it, and it's very well done. So thank you for doing that. And I know that there was a blank on here against my name. So do you want me to just send you the two, the two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have down open space and recreation, correct?
Yeah, Safe Roots to School and the Open Space Recreation.
Got it. No, I got it. Thank you.
Wait, thank you for doing that. I thought it was very well written.
You're welcome.
Okay, MVP update, Beth?
None today.
Okay, Townsend Housing Production Plan Review. Help me on this one, Beth.
Oh, for me?
Yeah, 2.6.
I think that would probably be best for Lori.
Okay, Lori.
Or Chaz. So we had, we don't have any more, we're going to be meeting again jointly. The Townsend Housing Authority had the consultant, one of the consultants at the last meeting. And basically, we went, we reviewed where they had gotten to that point, made our comments back, and Chaz, jump, jump in if I forget anything. And then I think we're all meeting on the 27th. Is that correct?
That's correct. At 7:00 PM on the 27th.
Yeah, so Chaz, is there anything else you want to add to that? I mean, it looks great.
Yeah, we're getting, I mean, I'm getting on a daily basis questions from the consultant to, to add the pieces that, that we need for it. Mike, I'm going to go ahead and forward a copy, our latest copy of our housing production plan, so you can see that, to see where we are in, in the drafting of it. But it, it, it's really a, a very well done to this point. And when we get to a point that we need to get votes on it, I'm sure that this will sail right through.
Thank you. Okay. Um, all right, 2.7 walkability report and intersect, intersection analysis report. We had a joint meeting with the selectmen last Tuesday. And so what's our next steps? And I'll look at you, Beth. Because you've worked with Emmy on this.
Yeah, I mean, whoever is in attendance, I think it's, it's going to be a decision by the town what the next steps are going to be. So I would imagine it would probably be another meeting with the Board of Selectmen in the community. Or I'm not sure how the town wants to go with that. Probably something that Mike could take a look at and figure out how he wants to proceed.
So Chaz, do you agree that this is something in terms of, because there's a whole lot of options here in identifying what the project is going to be? Is this something that's going to be looked at by the selectmen? Is this something that the selectmen is looking for Beth and Veronica to propose something? What do you see as the next step?
We actually were waiting for Mike's seat to get a little warm before we started throwing more work on him. But the selectmen did agree that we wanted to send it to both Mike and to our grant writer as well to see the, the various options. I think we're also planning on reaching out to MRPC to see if there, there's other strategic planning that's involved in a couple of other options, other things that we have in mind. So we need to bring Mike on board, bring him up to speed on what we're looking at so that he can help us parse it all out.
Okay, great. It's so good to have Mike here, isn't it, Chaz?
Hallelujah.
Yes.
Mike, you have no idea.
Okay. All right. All right, so let me sort of, Beth, don't let me forget this, but I sort of want to drop 3.1 to sort of the last. So let's hit 3.2 budget and capital guidance. So Beth, how are you, are you comfortable with the budget? And when it's already due, it's already been due, correct?
Yeah, I went in this morning. So, yeah, I copied you on it, and I put it in the folder. So everything is in your folders if the board wants to look at that.
Okay, and I guess my question is, did you allocate anything in terms of, let me just, I'll call it moderate, I saw your note, but on modernization?
I did not include any changes in the budget. So I, again, assume that would be a department addition and a department, you know, undertaking. So again, it's going to be Mike.
All right, so Mike, let me just sort of give you, gosh. Mike's under contract where he's not allowed to leave, correct, Chaz?
Yeah, we, we have him tattooed to that chair right now.
So Mike, one of the, I guess, one of the concerns that I think we all share is that our record modernization for the land use office is, I don't know, in the 1800s. So in other words, we're basically still, for the most part, with all of our records in manual files. And one of the things that we have been talking about is entering the digital era where, you know, there's a workflow process between building commissioner, conservation. And, you know, God forbid, if we were to have a fire in town hall, we would lose all records. And so I know Chief Sartell had offered to introduce us to Hollis where they have it automated and to start to look at what we need to do to sort of move the document flow process into the next century. So I mean, this is something, as I said, you, you know, you, you take one bite at the elephant at a time, but I think it would really behoove us to be able to, you know, over time, modernize our process, you know, our process from being all manual file oriented. I don't know if that makes sense to you or not.
It does, it does. And I like the idea of taking, now that I'm in the role, and we've got a couple of other people who have also started in the last year or so, taking moments and say, what's the best practices? How do we set up a system going forward? Maybe we'll fully implement it by the time the boxes aren't here anymore. Who knows? But yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's smart, and it also, it really can be very helpful for accessibility of people in the community who can just go on the website and find the archives that they're looking for and figure out what form they need.
Exactly. You know, if I want to pull something that happened on 50 Seaver Road, I can just access it. I don't have to come in and, you know, God forbid, make Beth find a folder. And I've always, I've always instructed Beth, no one's allowed to ever remove a folder from the land use office. Because if they remove it and it's not returned, we're lost.
So I think it's a great, I think it's a great conversation to have, and especially even, I know it's like, don't hesitate to throw that stuff at me because it's the stuff that is the best to start working on right away. So that you can start figuring out the best way to do that. You don't get into a bad system. So I like a lot.
I could be wrong, but I think you have 100% support from the selectmen in terms of moving forward, in terms of proposals to automate the land use department. And I think I saw Chaz nodding his head.
Yeah, i- if I may, Lance, it, it's, it's a conversation that Beth and I have had on many occasions. It started out her and I dreaming, and now it's actually coming to fruition. Mike, just so you know that there are opera funds available, and I do believe that the selectmen are starting with immediate software for right now before we go into full digitization. But this is, like Lance said, we're going to have to start at pieces at a time. I think making sure the application process and having the, the formal process, both with the building department and with the planning board, I think is especially important right now as we speak. And if we can get that process to the year 2000, not even to the 1900s, Lance, if we can get it up to at least the 2000s, we can then start in, in. Uh, if we can get it up to at least the two thousands, we can then start and, and, and digitize the, the past records. Um, so that, you're gonna be joining in on a larger conversation with the selectmen in regards to that as well.
Hmm. And, and just so you know, Mike, um, Chief Sartell has the exact same problem in the police department. So there could be some, um, synergy in terms of any labor that is expended in terms of just plain digitizing information.
Yes. I, I love the idea of, of trying to get standardized systems across departments too. Like, if you can figure out how to navigate the land use department and you can figure out how to navigate any department, cause they're all the same.
Yeah, and then Chief, and, and Chief Sartell informed me that Hollis has already implemented this and offered to introduce us, um, to Hollis because he's from there. Um, and they would at least, you know, be an opportunity to look at someone else who's implemented it.
Well, the goal is to look at our cyber infrastructure and, and the monies are to be, um, uh, allocated for increasing the cyber infrastructure, which would mean, um, in- instead of just being able to pay your dog license over the, over the internet, you should be able to go in and, and file an application for the planning board, complete with making payment to it. In that, you know, the, the Beth can walk in in the morning and have all the paperwork there and start her processes right away as opposed to making sure that each piece is there.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. And, you know, something, um, Chaz, so that when we have a decision, it's automatically emailed to the, or notifies the building commissioner. So, um, just to increase communication within, um, land use, let me just say that.
Yep, and when the, when the building, uh, when the building commissioner makes a decision or, or puts a stop order or whatever, all departments are notified that have anything to do with that particular, whatever the, the property or issue is.
Yes.
And also, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
When a permit is issued, um, assessor's office should be notified.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, agreed a hundred percent. Cause you know, they're the ones that need to go ahead afterwards and, um, validate to see if there's any, um, need to, um, change the assessment.
Um, also, just, cause I've been around a long time.
No, you haven't. Let me look at you, you're like a babe in the woods.
I've been around a long time and going back to Kathy Arugio, who, we
God bless her.
Fortune, yes, of having her for a couple of years with us on planning. But before that, it was the Housing Authority and she was land use coordinator. All of what we just talked about, we talked about then. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is. This is not a new idea. This is something we've wanted for year, twenty years now. And this is between all the, the departments. One didn't know what the other one was doing. It's not a new discussion. I'm just hoping that it finally happens.
So Lori, what I will say is that I don't, I can't speak to them. But I will tell you that we have a Board of Selectmen that support this.
I think you're right.
Okay, and I think, in my opinion, um, what is needed is the initiation from us.
As part of planning?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I don't know, Chaz, I mean, um, any comments?
I can't speak for the board, but I will say that in continuing on moving forward, and I think your best advocate right now will be both Mike and Beth.
Yep. So I think it's up to us and I think that, um, you know, if I thought that, um, we didn't have support from the powers to be, then um, certainly I would not advocate trying to push something forward that's not gonna happen. I mean, granted, we have to do it within our financial constraints, but, you know, it's one step at a time.
So as far as the budget, Lance, then I agree that Beth, um, Beth, talk to Mike, cause it is, uh, that would be more of a department thing than a, than a, a budgetary thing for planning.
Yep. Yep. Okay, um. Alright, so let me jump to three point three. Um, state housing zoning reform pursuant to three fifty-eight of the acts twenty twenty and the new section three A of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A. Um, so a little background on this, so, uh, new section of three A forty A basically, um, specifies that, um, MP, MBTA communities need to designate one district where multifamily housing is permitted um, as a right. It basically states that there should be no age restrictions and that the multifamily housing needs to be suitable for families. Basically specifies that there's a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. Um, so they're basically asking for MP, MBTA communities, of which Townsend is one, to basically put such a zoning bylaw in place. Now, if we decide or the town fails to enact such a bylaw, then Townsend will not be eligible for any housing choice initiative funding. Any local, uh, capital project funds, um, subject to, um, to triple E, Chapter twenty-nine or the Mass Works Infrastructure Program in, um, Chapter sixty-three, uh, sixty-three, Chapter twenty-three A. So there's an immediate action where we must basically, um, file a, a, um, form that we plan to move forward with this, that must be filed before January the twenty-second of this year. Um, so I believe as a board, oh, one other thing, um, I might add, and I think Julie brought this up in one of our meetings, is that the governor has passed, or legislation has been passed so that a zoning bylaw only requires a majority vote, where in the past it was a two-third, one-third vote. Um, so, um, first of all, um, I would like to entertain a, a motion from the planning board, um, from the members, um, of whether or not they feel that we should start to move forward with this. Do I have a motion that we should do this?
I will make that motion that we do this and then
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, um, how do we vote? Um, Julie, since you're in spotlight, yes.
Okay, so in, at MRPC meeting, and I don't know if anybody else has heard this, but Karen um, was basic, Chapman was basically saying that, yes, this is mandated, it will affect the grants, as you said, um, but also because you have to remember that we, we can, we can make this part of the zoning bylaw, it's still gonna have to be subject to any Board of Health issues. So then they may say that you can have fifteen units on an acre, but the Board of Health won't issue a permit for that. And plus you have to have somebody who's willing to develop something like that and deal with Townsend. So, basic, this may not actually cause any growth for Townsend because of our, we, we don't have any public sewer. Okay, so, but the only thing that it helps for us is that we have made it part of our zoning bylaws and we will still be eligible for any of those items that you spoke about. So we really do need to do it. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, and so, you know, I mean, so the planning board, um, you know, and when I say going forward with this, you know, it, it means that we're gonna work on a bylaw that complies with the state requirements to bring to town meeting. Um, and so, um, alright, so I had a, a, um, a motion from Julie to move forward with this, no, from Lori, excuse me, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, you second, didn't you, Julie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot, it's getting past my bedtime. Um, uh, so, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance is yes, and Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Okay, and so, um, so we have an immediate action where we need to fill out a forms. Um, and so what I would, uh, ask the board is, is it alright that either myself or Mike, um, take the action item to fill out that form? And I looked at the form and it just basically says, here's your name, um, and, you know, here's your, um, position and are you responsible for moving this forward? And it's, it, it looked like fairly germane. And so I, I just wanted to have the board's permission for us to fill out that form, which is due on May the twenty-second. I didn't see where the form had committed the town to anything other than stating or intend to move forward with it.
Okay.
Um, so Lori, do you have a, uh, are you gonna motion that we go forward and, and, and comply with the state's, uh, initial, uh, requirement?
I do, and have the chairman of the planning board sign the form.
Or, or the land use coordinator.
Okay, if you like.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, to be candid with you, I would prefer that Mike is the one that puts his name on this, but I didn't wanna put Mike on the spot. That's why I'm sort of doing it for.
Okay, so that is part of my motion that the land use coordinators sign the form per our motion.
Or the board, chairman.
Or the board.
Yeah, um, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, um, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Julie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Okay, and so Mike Crowley, I didn't wanna put you on the spot, but why don't you take a look at the form and let, let us know if you have any concerns at our next meeting or what have you?
I will, I will go through the form and, uh, I'll take a look at it. I was going through everything that was sent over before the meeting today, so I got a good look at it. Um, but I'll check out the form and see what needs to get done by the twenty-second and make sure it gets taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, when I looked at it and it was one of those things that you fill off, fill in online. And it said essentially what your first name was, your last name, what your position was. Are you responsible for working on this? And then it had the button that said next. So, um, I thought that just for continuity, that it might be best for you, but I didn't wanna put you on the spot.
Uh, I am happy to take a look at it and, and get the continuity going. That sounds great to me.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike.
So Lance, just so that we're clear, we don't meet again before the twenty-second.
No, no, this is May the twenty-second, Lori.
I thought we had to do something by January twenty-second.
No, no, it's May the twenty-second.
Okay.
So earlier in the meeting, it was mentioned as January twenty-second, is it January twenty-second or May twenty-second?
It's May the twenty-second, I may have misspoke.
Okay, well, that certainly, I can definitely get a look at a form between now and May twenty-second.
Um.
I could be wrong, but that's, and Chaz, correct me, isn't that the effective date of the new law, January twenty-second?
Yes, it is, and, and, um, uh, I didn't look at the form, um, that's, it, it's really just your basic intent. Um, I
You know what, I, I, I lie. Um, Hartley, can I, are you there, Hartley?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, Beth, can you present, uh, well, can I, um, can I present? Can you give me permission to present Hartley?
Sure, you want, you want, you want to, uh, screen share, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, second. And you have permission.
Alright. Does, can people see my screen?
Yes.
Hello, okay. You know what, um, it's a good thing you said this. Um, let me just light this up, um. See what I just highlighted? We wanted to call, uh, a near-term assignment from MBTA. Uh, MTBA communities must complete the MBTA Community Information Form by May the second. So I misspoke. It's not May the twenty-second, it's May the second.
Okay, well, we've, we've made our motion. That is the intent of the planning board. And now, Michael, take care of it and let us know whatever before our May meeting.
Yeah.
But before, in, in, in April, not gonna let it go to second.
Yeah, so it's not January the twenty-second, it's not May the twenty-second, it's May the second. And I think failure to do so may, um, impede any grants, you know, some grants or, or what have you. So I apologize for being off on this. Okay?
Okay, so is our, is it, is it your, um, assumption that we won't be presenting anything for the next town meeting?
Um.
But I
You know, I think, you know, and, and, and this is a discussion I would like to have with Mike Crowley. Um, I think that, I mean, and I've talked to Beth about this, is I think one thing to do is to maybe contact our surrounding MBTA communities. Cause I've, you know, had a lot of discussions with Groton, I've had discussions with Lunenburg. And I think that, um, you know, let's try to get this done before the next town meeting.
Okay, I, I would agree with that and some of the communities that surround us that are in that, um, region, um, do have some public sewer, which we not have, you know, but we're still gonna be restricted in that way. But it will give, it will still open up some opportunities if someone wanted to pursue it.
Yeah, and, um, you know, and just because we say that it's gotta be fifteen units, um, that doesn't mean, Lori, that a developer could come in and do five units per acre.
Right, I think it's up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, of course.
You know, so we could do a zoning bylaw that is fifteen. Uh, but if for some reason, because of lack of town sewer, it's limited to five, then that's still, I think, complying with the state.
So even if we had, and this is for multifamily, so it could be two family or four family, if that's what that lot would absorb.
Correct.
For a better word, um, if the, if Nishoba Board of Health gives a permit for the subject systems or whatever, um, yeah. So therein lies the opportunity. Um, it may not be affordable housing, you know, because, just because of the way the pricing is today and the cost of all the materials, but, um, I, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, and I think we have to, you know, I think it's important that, um, we as a board put something forward to our community that complies with the state.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing, Hartley.
Fine, no problem.
Wanted to, I just wanted to pull up the memo so that, uh, just to confirm the date and show it to people. Alright. Um, one thing, uh, Beth, are you there? Did I lose Beth?
I'm here. Oh, she's there.
Okay, Beth, could you do me a favor? And this isn't anything that needs to be done anytime soon. But, um, and I don't know, Chaz, if you can help us with this or not. But can we quantify the amount of funding that But can we quantify the amount of funding that Townsend could potentially be available for with the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Property Funds under two E E E and the Mass Infrastructure Program? And I think that we need to have this prior to any town meeting. You know, because the first thing that we're going to, you know, if we were to put a bylaw in front of this town that increases the density, correct me if I'm wrong, but someone had better articulate what the cost is if we decide not to do this.
Agreed. Absolutely.
Yeah, because if we can't articulate that, I can tell you what's going to happen to the zoning bylaw in this town.
Well, Lance, if I may address your question to me. The, what this really, really is a preliminary stage to say, yes, we, we, the town are, are going to be looking at it. I think what they're looking for is that you're willing to work with them, number one. Number two is um, I believe with the short form, I've done a million zillion short forms with, uh, with the state. It, it's really a down and dirty. Yes, we're, we, we have it on our, our agendas, we are looking at the issue. Uh, second, we are looking to collaborate with other boards and, and committees um within the town to see feasibility. I don't think they're looking at something precise. That's number.
I agree with, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, the, number two is.
Saying is that before we go in front of the town with a bylaw, we need to be able to articulate what the advantages or the cost is to the town if we do not do this.
Correct, and, and my second point would be, um, I, I I would think that we would approach it the same way we did when we were writing the marijuana bylaws. If it went one way or the other way, we just wanted to cover ourselves and I think that's the approach that you should take with this.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent. I just need to, to be successful with this bylaw. You know, because if the bylaw fails to pass, then the town is going to lose funding sources.
Now Beth, would this have anything to do with DLTA um to work with MRPC with that?
Excuse me?
I, I don't, um, I'm not sure, but I, I know that um Karen Chapman from MRPC has agreed to come to the January twenty-fourth meeting and talk to the board about DLTA and also about this particular um MBTA zoning district.
I think that's your starting point, Lance.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
Beth, you didn't change the meeting to the thirty-first? I thought there was an email.
No, we're, we're sticking with the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay, um, alright, so Mike Crowley, so um so take a look at it and um feel free to contact me if you have any questions on it um, or any concerns. I, you know, I didn't go through the same form, but I, I have, and I've never done these before, but I have a tendency from what I looked at it, it's what Chaz basically articulated. We just need to convey by May the second that this is something we're moving forward with. Alright, any questions, Mike?
Sounds good.
Alright, um, alright Beth, so let's jump up to, um, do you want to do three point one or three point four? Beth, I'll give it up to you.
Um, I actually would probably not, I want to strike three point four tonight, please. And um, three point one, there's only one notice in the folder and that's from um the Town of Pepperell. The board members asked for a copy of the decision uh regarding a retirement community. And I provided that, it's in the, it's in the correspondence folder.
Okay, thank you. So we didn't want to make poor Mike read this from his iPhone. Um, okay, um, yes, Mike?
No, I'm saying thanks.
Alright, you're welcome. Um, so right now, our next planning board meeting is remaining on January twenty-fourth, it's not going to be pushed to January the thirty-first. One thing that I'll just mention it right now is, well, no, I won't mention it, I'll just keep it short at that. And then we have a joint meeting on January the twenty-seventh with the Townsend, Townsend Housing Authority. Is there anything else anyone else wants to bring up? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Julie?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Um, Lori?
Yes.
Okay, and Lance is yes. Okay, thank you everyone for um being at the meeting, especially to you Ian, and once again, congratulations to Mike who is on board. And uh, we look forward to working with you again. And with that, let's uh call it an evening.
Good night.